Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the September 27, 2021 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please Commissioner Marvin Whitworth will lead in our prayer and our pledge. Marvin?
Let us bow. Our holy Father, we're indeed grateful for the blessings you give us for life itself, for this opportunity to come in together as a group to discuss important matters of our county. We pray you give us wisdom and judgment as we deliberate these matters. We pray that all things be done according to your will. Father, we pray for our first responders, for those who protect our community, those who are in foreign fields that are away from their families, and we pray that you be with them and their families as they anxiously wait their return. Father, we pray that you'll be with us in all that we do, that we will serve you, that we will be good examples of what you would want us to be. In Jesus' name, amen. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call a roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
David Moore.
Thank you, Gail. This time I'll call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed for the reading and approval of our June 29 meeting minutes. Pettis?
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of those minutes and I move for their approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve our June 29, 2021 meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We have one item that's been withdrawn. The item is 6A2 Eddington Acres that will not be considered this morning. Getting into our business, we have four items that have been submitted for final plat approval. 6A1, the item number is 21-2064 McCormick Commercial Subdivision resub of lots 1 and 2, three lots on 31.28 acres, zoned LI Light Industrial located along West Jefferson Pike. Round properties is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good morning, commission members. This particular final plat you had before used really more of a re-subdivision between lots 2 and 3. You can see where, Mike's going to zoom in just a little bit there, you'll see where they're shifting the original property line to the new line that he's highlighting. That dash line is the original and the new line is the darker line. They're also putting a 50-foot access easement along that. Originally, we had some concerns because there's a detention pond right in that area, the way that was originally shown that was going through the pond, or at least really close to the pond. By shifting the line and doing what they did, they have resolved that particular issue. We're guessing that the eventual plan is to allow access to that lot to the west, although that hasn't been confirmed by the applicant, but that seems to be the only reason to have that access easement there, being that the other lot, Lot 3, actually has access to the private drive, which is going to be a public road, and then also West Jefferson Pike. But the plat beyond that, after the revisions were made, the plat appears to be in good order. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve.
Thank you, David.
They have comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2064 McCormick Commercial Subdivision. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A3, item number is 21-2066 Griffith Cove Subdivision and resub of lots 148 and 149, and lots 183 Section 4 Griffith Park Subdivision. 92 lots on 37 and 1/4 acres on PUD located along William Dalen Drive. D.R. Horton is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back at the Planning Commission's November 9, 2020 meeting. As you can see, all of these lots are being proposed to be platted in this one phase. There are three lots, as you stated, in Griffith Park, Section 4 toward where Mike is highlighting right there, and that was to make way for Copenhagen Drive to come through. That was something that we knew was coming, so this is consistent with that. Most of our comments have been addressed. Mike's got a couple of comments on some of the drainage there on lots 183 and 72, and I'll let him go into more detail on that.
What we've been told is they needed to pick up a little additional step dispersal, soils dispersal area, and so they had to make some modifications to lots 81, 82, 83. So what you see here is kind of the aftermath of that, and it is kind of awkward, but we asked them, do you have a building plan that will fit on these awkward, even smaller lots? And they say they do. So that's the only real change is they had to make the step area a little bit larger and kind of modify lots 81, 82, and 83.
Yes, sir. Right.
Recommendation of staff?
Based on that, I mean, we recommend approval.
I'll make a motion then, based on the staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2066 Griffith Cove Subdivision and resub of lots 148, 149, and lot 183 Section 4 Griffith Park. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A4, 21-2067 Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 3B, 56 lots on 12.95 acres on PUD located along Hoboken Way, BMCH Tennessee is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved, at least for Section 3, the newer part of the PUD, was approved at the Planning Commission's August 28, 2017 meeting. This section does make a connection into Woodruff Cove, which is right to the south via the Bow Meadows Drive, which does allow this development to have a second route for the new traffic signal at Shelbyville Pike and Rucker Lane Burnley Way. Most of our comments have been addressed. There is one outstanding comment that Mike's going to discuss that has to do with Lot 309 and the size of that drainage easement on there, but I'll let Mike go into more detail about that.
Zoom into that real quick. You can see on Lot 309, there's a 15-foot drainage easement. Our minimum size is 20-foot drainage easement, so that's what we have to have. Their argument is, well, in Woodruff Cove, there's also a drainage easement on this side, but that is a separate drainage easement. They're not combined. My thought is, if anybody needs to get back here to do maintenance, 15 feet is not quite enough to get equipment through there. So that's the only issue I have with Lot 309, is it needs to be a 20-foot easement, not a 15, but that would dramatically decrease the building envelope right there. So either they need to combine the two easements together so nothing can be built on that property line, or make that a 20-foot drainage easement right there. I'm just looking out for the future maintenance and access.
Woodruff property?
Yes, just to the right, which is the south, the plat's kind of turned on its side. This is Woodruff Cove right here, and there is a parallel easement, but it's a separate drainage easement. My thought is, you can't build a fence in a drainage easement, but you can build it on the property line just on the edge. So if somebody were to come in here and build a fence on this edge right here, it's not technically in the drainage easement, but it restricts our drainage access in that drainage easement.
All right, can we hold 309 out until Woodruff Cove gets their plans and then put them together?
Yes.
Will that work?
Yes, sir. I think that is workable. It just, we need something to be able to get back there. Once we get past that building envelope, it widens up to a 30-foot drainage easement because there's a large pipe through there. So that's...
We just can't say now, well, they're going to do that. We've got to have something that, when you get Woodruff Cove there, it'll work out fine.
Yes, sir. Right. Because once this gets recorded like this, this is the legal creation of this easement. So...
So if I make a motion to approve all except 309?
Sure.
That'll work it out. I'll do it.
I have a motion to approve with the exception of Lot 309, including staff comments.
Right.
I have a motion and a second to approve 21-2067 Davenport Station, Section 3, Phase 3B with staff comments. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Does that take care of that, Doug, do you think? Very good. Item 6A5, item number 21-2069 Creeks Bend Subdivision, Section 1, Phase 7, 35 lots on 17.05 acres, zoned RM located along Garrett Street, Silver Hill Partners is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back in 2006. This plat does appear to be consistent with that preliminary approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. I think there is a little bit of minor tweaking that needs to be done on one item, but other than that, this plat is in good order. Of course, we won't sign the plat until the tweaks that need to be made are made, but with that, we're satisfied with this moving forward. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Where does this subdivision empty to? I see you've got two entrances and exits. It does not empty to a street. It goes to another part of a subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's just an extension. Yeah, Mike will pull it up.
Gremlins have come out today in the little blue spinny wheel. All right, let me go back to map. So you can see on site location map, this hatched area, diagonal hatch area is the area of this section. It's got a connection here out to Old Lebanon, and then also it'll have a connection out this way. So it'll have two connections. It'll create a loop through here. I'll kind of blow that up a little bit. This is the area for this section.
I'm going to ask a stupid subsequent question to that, looking at this. Do you know what kind of traffic issues are developed every morning as people go out to work as they exit through these subdivisions with hundreds of houses in there?
Do I know the traffic? Yes, sir. Yes. It is a growing concern that we've got more and more development, not just this area, but also farther to the west. We've got Cascade Falls and Fall Creek. So they're large, large subdivisions that have seen growth through over the years. But as far as we could say right now, it's an annoyance in the morning, but we're keeping an eye on it. Yes, sir.
You looking for a motion, Mr. Chair? Make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve 21-2069 Creeks Bend Subdivision, Section 1, Phase 7. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Short-term rentals, Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I wanted to just brief the Planning Commission on some of the discussions that we had during the Public Works Committee earlier this month. Toward the end of the meeting, Public Works Committee and Mr. Kush, of course, being the chair of that committee, can speak more to this, asked us to look at several items. One of them had to do with noise, you know, looking at our noise ordinance. One of them had to do with looking at our regulations for turn lanes, but the one we wanted to talk with you about today in a little more detail had to do with the short-term rentals, things like Airbnb, VRBO, those kind of things. This is something that we, as a county, currently don't regulate as far as zoning, of course, you know, taxes and hotel motel tax, all that. That's still something that's out of our purview, but it's something that is required. But it's becoming a larger and larger issue as time has gone on. We know we're seeing several issues out, just out in the field, people using campers and RVs and things like that. Very rarely does a week go by where staff isn't getting some sort of a phone call about someone using their property for Airbnb. What we've done so far as staff, we've found the state law that regulates short-term rentals and what we can and can't regulate from a zoning standpoint. They're not exempt from local regulations, which is good, but there are some little caveats and things that we do have to watch out for. For example, one of the things is, and this is really not a big surprise, but with any legally established Airbnb or VRBO or anything like that, if they meet certain criteria, the rules which we would apply, whatever rules we come up with, would not apply to anything already in existence at that point. You know, basically, anything moving forward would be what we'd be regulating. So the reason I wanted to bring this up, A, was just, again, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things that we're going to be looking at as staff over the next month or two, also to get your feedback and any ideas that you may have, concerns that you may have, just things that you may have heard, concerns that people have regarding short-term rentals and some of the things you'd like us to look at as staff before we start bringing potential amendments to you for consideration. So we're just really at the beginning of this, so at this point, we don't have anything to share, but we didn't want to open it up for any kind of discussion or if you guys have any thoughts or concerns that you'd like us to look into while we're doing this.
So a short-term rental is going to be 30 days or less, or less than 30 days?
A lot of it depends on how you define it, but that's pretty much one of the standard definitions that we've seen, the research we've done so far.
And would those short-term rentals be subject to the hotel motel tax?
Yes.
And do we have a method for collecting?
Yeah, I've had some discussions with our county clerk already about this. Now, when it comes to things like Airbnb, the larger companies that people contract with, basically, all they're getting is they're basically getting the payment, you know, from the company itself. It's not broken down into this address is this much, this address is that much. They basically get a check every, so I don't know if it's monthly, quarterly, or whatever, but that's basically what they're getting from the established companies. Now, those that don't subscribe on one of those sites would have to handle that on their own. Now, how they do that is, that's a different question, because if somebody's just doing it and kind of flying under the radar, there may not be a way to know that that's happening. But there is a mechanism, at least for the larger organizations currently.
So is there a way to regulate large parties? And I know we have a noise requirement, but you know, there's got to be a limit to the number of cars that, if your neighbor's going to be essentially running a fraternity party house every weekend.
Right.
There's got to be a way to restrict the number of cars or occupants?
Well, you can look at parking requirements and things like that. Of course, you can look at occupancy. I mean, that's something that Tanya Bell, our codes director, may want to speak more to as far as occupancy of the building itself. There's a lot of nuance to the issue. There are some where the owner of the property actually lives on the property or in the house. They're just renting out rooms, you know, to help them with monthly mortgages or rents or whatever. There are those where the person, the owner of the property, doesn't live there, and it's more of a, you know, well, you just do what you want and, you know, hopefully you don't get in trouble kind of a thing. Of course, we'll rely on, you know, existing codes as far as, you know, public disorder and things like that, you know, from the police standpoint, but, I mean, there are certain things we can build in, yes.
I can see, I guess, more leniency for an owner that is living on the same property rather than an absentee owner, you know, somebody that can at least provide some sort of supervision that the rules are being followed. But gosh, I don't know how you're going to enforce all that. I guess that's the tricky part.
It is. I mean, and just from what little we've already looked into it, it's going to be challenging, I mean, regardless of which direction we go.
The chalet that I rent out, I rent out on Verbo. Verbo collects the taxes. I used to collect them and send them in every month over here, but they collect it now. They send it in.
Right.
Now, people left from Texas this past weekend. We've got some people coming in Thursday, and I don't know, they may, I don't know where they're coming. They come in from all over the world. They really do, all over the world. But the, I say maximum occupancy, 10. That's because I know they slip in more than that. I'm not stupid to know they're not going to do that, but I've got a mobile home on a piece of property. He's my guard dog. So that way, I try to take care of it, and you just, I've only had trouble, had this like 10 years now, and I've only had trouble out of one bunch, and a bunch of kids slipped in. I didn't get their age right, or I didn't ask for ID enough or something, had trouble out of that, and had to get the police come in and take care of that, but that was the only one. Most of the people that you meet are great, very interesting people, and it's been real good, so I've enjoyed it. So we might be thinking of trying, what we can do to curb a lot of this, but a lot of it's not a problem. It's not a problem. And by the way, I've got it up for sale if anybody's interested, so.
We've also had discussions, well, Josh Sanders, our fire marshal, is here. Some of the things we're talking about building in there are, you know, obviously codes and safety inspections, fire inspections, things like that, maybe like some sort of a yearly permitting type situation where every year they have to renew, and that triggers the need for another inspection to go out there and make sure everything's still on the up and up, so to speak. So those are some of the things we've talked about. Again, hadn't come up with anything yet, but we just wanted to get your take on it. Obviously, there'll be more discussion as time goes on, but we did want to at least bring this to your attention and see what other comments that you all may have.
Doug, now, I have heard of people putting up campers.
Yes.
You know, side yard and renting those out at Airbnbs, but aren't there, I mean, there are regulations on how long campers should be up. Is that correct?
Well, when it comes to zoning, and again, any codes issues, I'll leave for Tanya, but from a zoning standpoint, we do allow campers and RVs and things to be used in a couple of different situations, one of them being if you're renovating your home or you're building your home, maybe, we do allow for a camper RV, something like that, to be lived in on-site while construction is ongoing. Of course, they have to have a valid building permit, et cetera. Of course, we do allow, you know, visiting relatives or friends to come to somebody's house for a couple of weeks and say, hey, you know, we're just going to be here and spend some time and whatnot. No issue with there. Now, there are limits in the ordinance as far as the time, as far as that goes, so we don't worry about that. Those are the two primary reasons that we do allow for that situation. Now, as far as using them to, in this situation, like you're talking about, an Airbnb, we actually have a, we had a zoning violation similar to that where somebody had a piece of property and had several of these things on there, and that's exactly what they were doing with them. They were using basically as a campground, which is how we would regulate something like that now. Somebody wanted to do that on a larger scale, well, it has to be a commercial campground at that point. That has to go through different zoning. And I think I heard, Tanya, did you click your, yeah, she's looking spade. Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that the zoning complaints that we've gotten over the last couple of years on Airbnb and short-term rental properties is not so much noise, surprisingly. We don't get a whole lot of complaints about parties and stuff, and if we do, it's typically on a Monday when it's all over. The neighbor will call and say that there was a party on Saturday night, and there's not a lot we can do about it. The biggest complaint that we get on short-term rentals is people renting out unapproved structures, something that they've makeshift into some little apartment or some hut that they've put. We have one currently right now that somebody converted a shed, put a couple of bunk beds into it and a TV, and put an outdoor shower and a porta pana out there, and they're renting that to on Airbnb. So the biggest issue that we've got that we feel like we need to maybe start regulating is the safety of these structures, because these structures, some of them are not approved and they're not fit to be lived in or to be stayed in occupied. So Josh and I are going to come up with, you know, basic stuff, you know, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, parking, access to them, you know, you don't have to, that's the biggest things that we're seeing on the codes and zoning enforcement side of it. And I have to add, too, that a lot of these ones that, a lot of these short-term rentals that people advertise on Facebook and Instagram and stuff, those ones are not, they're not being taxed. Like Doug said, the ones on VRBO and Airbnb, the company is taxing those. They're collecting the taxes, and they're paying Rutherford County. They're turning it over to Rutherford County, but the people who advertise on Facebook and Instagram and other social media, we don't know that they're collecting taxes on that and paying it to Rutherford County, so we have no idea.
I'm wondering if anyone has seen any type of movement towards businesses essentially becoming Airbnb, Airbnb-type operators and acquiring a lot of properties around town and just making them rental properties. So instead of essentially owning a hotel or a motel, you own a chain of Airbnb, Airbnbs, and you may take over most of a neighborhood or have dozens or hundreds around town.
I haven't necessarily heard anything about that. Now, similar, but not quite what you're talking about, there does seem to be a movement of what are rental subdivisions. We've even heard of some of them around here where a developer comes in, puts in a subdivision section like the ones we've looked at today, and they're all for rental purposes, not necessarily for short-term rental, but just for leasing. We have seen that. I don't know if we've necessarily seen a lot of them here, but we are seeing more and more in the zoning literature about that situation, maybe not so much about the Airbnb side of things.
In that vein, and I hope, this is hearsay, and maybe we would like to talk to the Realtors Association to see what they know, but I have heard from multiple people about in subdivisions that a consortium of investment brokers will come in and buy multiple housings in subdivisions just to rent out, which drives the homeowners associations and the neighbors crazy, which then, I'm sure a lot of, I get calls from constituents that are not fans of that, but that may be worth talking to the Realtors Association to see what the mood is or what's going on from that standpoint. One other thing I want to talk about, just for the record, Doug mentioned noise ordinance. Jim Everwater referenced the noise ordinance, and Tanya can speak up if she'd like. She and I worked heavily on the noise ordinance as it related to fireworks push that I did a year or so ago, and Nick can probably also jump in if he wishes. We have a noise ordinance... We have a noise ordinance, but it's not enforceable unless Tanya's group is right there on scene when something happens. We have no means of enforcement. So, I would love to see one at some point in time. I'd love to be able to see the sheriff's department have access or be able to enforce that with us, but I don't even think the state regs are written where they can help us on that, if I recall. But, anyway, we may talk about a noise ordinance, but I don't, we don't really have a noise ordinance.
We don't. Can I speak to that for just a second? Our noise ordinance has been in effect since, it was adopted in 2008, I believe, 2007, 2008. And there was a write-up. I have got a write-up in the paper, the Daily News Journal, for, from a couple of weeks after it was adopted and I don't know who the reporter was, but he had reported that some adjoining counties had attempted to put a noise ordinance in and basically they didn't do it because it was virtually unenforceable because the codes department or the enforcement individual would have to be on site when the noise was actually taking place so that they can verify that a violation exists. The sheriff's department, and Nick, you can correct me here, but the sheriff's department can only enforce if it's state law. Is that correct? They can't enforce a local ordinance.
I think it's going to depend on what the ordinance is regulating. You know, we've looked at, let me tell you this, generally speaking, when it comes to criminal violations, that's what kind of we're talking about here, not necessarily a civil fine. If what we're talking about is citing somebody for a Class C misdemeanor, generally a local regulation passed by our county commission cannot be enforced by our local police department because if we were doing that, we would be treating the citizens of Rutherford County differently than the rest of the citizens in the state when it came to criminal violations. So, if there's a way to tailor the citation to be a civil fine enforcement mechanism, you might be able to do so, but to your point, you are correct. The sheriff's office can't go out and arrest somebody for violating a local resolution of the county commission.
So, we get a lot of complaints where the individual will call on a Monday and say that they called the sheriff's department on Friday night or Saturday night or whenever the event took place and the sheriff's department told them there was nothing they could do and to call us on Monday. Well, when they call us on Monday, it's too late because we can't verify that a violation actually took place or actually existed at that point. So, and I did speak with an individual from a local police department, which we'll go unnamed, who, it's a municipality and they do have a noise ordinance and they have, the general consensus within the police department is that they can't enforce it either. They try and when they take it to court, it's thrown out because it's so minor, because they can't prove it, they have, you know, they don't have the means to prove that a violation existed. So, the officers of that municipality just gave up trying, so they don't even write violations on noise ordinances anymore, on noise violations, sorry.
So, if you got multiple complaints from the same property, perhaps they were running a regular frat house there on a lot of weekends. Is it possible to declare something a public nuisance? Is that something that we need to write into our ordinance or, I mean, is there any way to shut them down if a property does become a regular problem?
I do believe, and Tanya, correct me if I'm wrong, the state law does allow for the suspension of a short-term rental license provided, I think it's three complaints on the same property. Now, of course, they need to be, you know, verified, you know, valid complaints.
And in one calendar year. So, three complaints in one calendar year. Under the state law, the short-term, the short-term rental state law allows us to suspend their ability to rent the house for the remainder of that calendar year or for one full calendar year, I believe, after the.
I think so. And then we'd have to look at it too, you know, based on the discussion we're having about noise and everything, that may be a little difficult, but there may be other issues, like if they're violating health, safety issues.
It's any violation, yeah.
Too much parking and, you know, they're not supposed to do that. I mean, we'll have to look at it from that angle, I think, more than the noise.
I have a follow-up question to Nick's point. When you said that if we made it a civil instead of criminal, can our codes officers issue a civil violation?
So, again, I think it's going to depend on what we're regulating. So, for example, there are things in our zoning ordinance and also our building code that if violated, oddly enough, there is state law that would allow the county through its building official to have a citation of that individual to criminal court. Now, I know what I said earlier was we need to be careful of having criminal laws just in our county that are different from the rest of the state, but there is a general state statute that says that for duly enacted codes, like a building code, if violated, then you can cite the person for a Class C misdemeanor into criminal court, which generally has along with it a $50 fine. That's different than issuing a civil summons and going to General Sessions Civil Court and asking for simply a monetary fine of $50 with no chance of jail time or imprisonment. There are different constitutional standards that would apply whether you're going civil or criminal. I think you have more latitude as a local government to cite individuals for civil violations than you do for criminal violations.
And to do that, that would not require the sheriff's department to show up. We could do, a codes official could do that.
Generally speaking, that's correct.
Okay, so, I'm thinking about the permitting process that you're talking about. If we permit these, I'm wondering, and they have to renew their permit annually, I'm wondering if there's not something in the permit where they're committing to, you know, a certain list of compliance terms. And so, if they, if their permit, if they're, if the conduct of them or whoever is outside the conduct that's being permitted in that, that compliance that's being permitted inside that permit, would that trigger after three complaints or, you know, whatever the number is, there's got to be some grace there. I just know there's got to be some documentation for anything to happen, anything to change. If we're talking about somebody being a chronic issue, you don't want the sheriff's department to just say, we're not going out there because we can't, you know what I mean? You're perpetuating nothing happening. So, if we had some way to at least document there is some ongoing behavior and they've agreed to in their permit to say, we agree to conduct ourselves a certain way, then at least you've got something along the way that says, okay, you agreed to this, you violated it. Now, this is the or else. This is what could happen and we can do all of that, I'm hoping is what I'm hearing and leaving the sheriff's department out of this because that's the problem is, you know, they've got bigger fish to fry than codes issues. So, I'm just kind of listening for how do we get to a solution that would work, that I think the thing that's going to be for you, Tanya, the tricky thing is going to be, you're going to have to have codes officials that work on the weekend.
All right. And then we need to kind of address if a violation does exist, we do go out to a piece of property and a violation exists and the occupant is causing, or the tenant is causing the violation, who do we cite? Do we cite the occupant that's causing the violation or do we cite the property owner?
Without knowing the exact specifics, I would say generally it would be the owner of the property is the one that's going to be responsible and the one that's going to be the permit holder. I guess I envision a scenario where you could have a property owner that has hired a management company to manage and clean these and so we might have a question of fact there of who to cite, but I think that you can probably never go wrong with citing the owner or whoever's listed on the permit that's being issued.
When we were going through all this about wedding chapels and the noise level that it might be, didn't we put a time limit maybe on when the band had to stop?
Yeah, 10 o'clock is, well, at least amplified music has to cease by 10 o'clock.
Yeah, but the noise level, we didn't go for that. If the deputy, on Saturday night and there's a violation and the deputy gives your telephone number to you, to someone, then they call you, the property owner. If you go out there and you see it, really, that's a useless trip for you, is it not?
I'm sorry, say that one.
If you go out there and hear all that noise, what you going to do about it? Nothing.
Well, first of all, it has to exceed a decibel level. So, I would have to take a decibel reading that has to be taken from the property line and a lot of other criteria and verify that a violation of the ordinance actually exists if that stuff is written into the ordinance.
If we have an ordinance, yes. If we have an ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, I can't go out there and determine my interpretation of loud music might be completely different from somebody else's interpretation of loud music. So, there would have to be some levels in there, I would imagine.
As it stands now, if they called you out tonight to one of them, you really don't have anything to grasp on to.
I've got a noise meter, a handheld noise meter that I can take out there, but I've been told on several occasions that that will not hold up in court.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of criteria that has to be met in order to get a correct reading from one of those hand meters. You know, there has to be, the weather conditions are a factor, the direction of the noise meter, humidity. And I mean, there really is a lot of criteria that an attorney could tear apart and it would be gone.
Makes a good point. I mean, you see people over in city court with ewing sellers all the time on speeding tickets where they've hired a lawyer because I don't want a speeding ticket and they're trying to cross-examine the police officer to make sure that his radar detector was properly calibrated. And so, it's the same sort of analysis with what she's talking about.
Doug, you're probably way ahead of me, but Nashville has a few cases of well-publicized units, homes up there that have become large party houses and numerous, or at least several occasions had hundreds and hundreds of people in attendance. And I know they were trying to hone their regulations in on a way to enforce this. So, it might be wise, if you haven't done so already, at least take a look and see where they are so far with it.
Yeah, and I have not looked at them lately. Quite frankly, a few years ago, when this whole business with short-term rentals came up, at the state level, it was actually in response to what Metro Nashville was doing. So, thankfully, they didn't just completely preempt the locality's ability to regulate those, but theirs are, last time I looked at them, those are, they're a lot more involved and in-depth probably than what we're thinking about. Of course, you know, Nashville to, you know, Rutherford County is probably, you know, apples to oranges as far as that goes, but yeah, they've got a pretty involved set of regulations. But, yeah, we'll pull those back out again to take a look at them. Just been a while.
One more thing, I'm intrigued by this idea of needing a permit and I'm wondering, if I'm coming in to get a permit, I'm wondering how restrictive can that permit be, is what I'm thinking. We're going to give you a permit, but if you, you know, you have to pay the fee, which means you've got a little skin in the game, you're agreeing to certain compliance terms, if we can build in some consequences, again, you've got skin in the game. That's kind of my thing. It's all about accountability. It's all about holding those folks accountable to a certain level of conduct. I mean, that's all we're asking for, with safety or, you know, whatever that issue is. So, I'm intrigued by how restrictive can this permit be? How much can we ask of them? There's part of me that, you know, immediately when we start talking about non-occupied rental property, my brain goes back to, that's a business enterprise. Right now, a single-family dwelling that's rented is taxed at 25%. If it's rented, it's a business enterprise and really should be taxed at 40%. So, again, my brain is going, all right, if you're going to be non-compliant and you're not going to report your taxes and you're not going to report then, and you're caught, that's the whole thing is if you're caught, then are now are you going to agree to, you're going to pay 40% on that property versus the 25% that it's currently taxed? That's, it's the whole thing of how do I get you to do the right thing? What, and so I don't know how big the hammer can be to get them to do that. So, I'm going to be very interested to read the permit and what Nick says legally we can get them to agree to.
If a person's running a business, then isn't it commercial and it has to be rezoned It's becoming complex.
Let me add a scenario. When Mr. Mabrowater asked about rental properties, Section 12 of Colonial States, the entire Section 12 of Colonial States was bought by one company and it rents out every one of these houses in Section 12. So, I don't know if they're short-term, long-term, whatever, but one company owns every one of these houses when y'all were asking about rental property.
And Mike, and I bet if you go pull up the property assessor information, they're taxed at 25% because they're single-family dwellings.
I'm doing that right now, if it'll work.
And just for giggles, in my subdivision, Three Rivers, the homeowners association states that if you are going to rent, you have to have a minimum six-month lease. They will not entertain anything less than a six-month lease.
Yeah, and the state law, interesting that you say that, the state law actually does allow for HOAs to do what you're talking about, to limit that. So, it's not just, you know, us doing the regulating as far as that goes. They are allowing the HOAs and whatnot to do something similar. Now, that doesn't help us much on.
It is 25%.
Yeah, on those ones in the areas where large acreage tracts, of course, but in subdivisions where that could become an issue, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, as we continue to grow within this county, these are, these are just a few of what we're going to be facing right here and as, I've just been sitting here listening to the discussion as far as noise and what we can do in that. If there is an answer to that, I don't know where you find that. I've got individuals that I could almost set my calendar to, that I know when they're going to call and complain. It's 4th of July, it's New Year's, it's all these different times that I know they're going to call and complain and want to know about our codes dealing with fireworks, dealing with this. Now, in my area, it has slowed down a lot since ammunition has become more costly and this sort of thing, but someone calls about shooting. And even, I have seen complaints about the motors on drain, on grain bins, the dryers running to dry grain when soybean season comes around because they run 24 hours. And people have built homes around some of these bins. Well, you've got to dry these bins or you can't, can't sell them. And they're complaining about those. So, when we talk about noise, it's not necessarily a wedding chapel, it's not necessarily music, it's not necessarily fireworks. It can be a multitude of things. I know in Williamson County, when I was working for Farm Bureau, there was a gentleman over there that called and complained about a grain bin. And the reason he was calling, he was a writer. He was a country music songwriter and it interfered with his thought process and he couldn't write because of that grain bin. And he called me, wanted me to do a story on it. I said, well, write a story about grain bins. Maybe that'll help your thought process because I wasn't about to take the side of his side against my farmers. But, these are things that, that we're going to continue to have as long as we continue to grow and everything comes in closer to what we're doing and how we're involved. And if you can come up with a suggestion as far as coming up with how to enforce that, if you can enforce that, I'd like to see it done. I like standing there and watch it on 4th of July because that's the closest thing to battle I've ever been involved in because there is no way somebody's going to step in the middle of that and say, hey, you got to quit that. Because it's just, it's just, that's a difficult one to say and a difficult one to do. So, I mean, that is a, one I just don't know where you do and how you do it, but the rentals are there. Krishna Kush is right right here. I know there's individuals who have bought into subdivisions, bought homes, they made their homes there and now a lot of the other homes around them have been sold and they become rentals with not the same intentions as they had of making their homes. So, I think this is good discussions, but I think now we're starting to walk off into the weeds and I don't know if we have those answers for us.
Right. Well, and like I said, I mean, this is, there'll be more discussion on this as we actually present something. I mean, I don't disagree with a lot of what's been said here as far as, especially some of the discussions that Rhonda and I think Jim were having as far as well as this is commercial or not. I mean, sure seems like that, but I know there's a lot of nuance to it. So, we'll, we'll be working on that. We'll be coming up with some more detailed and concrete regulations to discuss at more detail. So, just give us a little bit of time and we'll, we'll come back around for that. We just wanted to kind of get your take on it, see what direction. We just wanted to kind of get your take on it, see what direction you thought we might want to look. Again, so we appreciate the, the feedback on that. If there's obviously anything else, we're more than welcome to hear it. And if you think of something after the meeting, give us a shout, let us know. We'll, we'll talk, talk more about it for sure.
We've been telling a lot of folks recently, when they talk about traffic and overcrowding issues and bringing in certain things in neighborhoods that they're not accustomed to, that right now is as good as it's ever going to be. And it might be the same scenario right here. Right now is as good as it's ever going to be. With that, our next meeting is scheduled for October the 11th.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other item. It's not on your, but, no, 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 you're fine. It's not on the agenda. There's one other item I did want to bring up for consideration. Mike, if you could bring up the zoning ordinance provision, thank you. This has to do with looking at our regulations for major home-based businesses. You'll recall several years ago, we had a provision, I'm talking specifically about item F here on the screen. Several years ago, we had a provision on there about auto repair not being allowed as a major home-based business. As you recall, we ended up taking that out. They will, are allowed as major home-based businesses. Of course, those have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for consideration and approval. Since then, we've seen a handful of them. Seems like we've seen some that were approved, we've seen some that were denied, which is kind of what we were hoping the, the process would look like. What I want to talk about today is that first bullet point under F, where it says kennels and veterinarian clinics and hospitals. Over the last year or so, we have had a couple of folks come in wanting to do kennels out of their house or animal rescues or something like that. And the way that we would regulate those now, if they have a large enough property, they would have to rezone to an agricultural residential classification, which means they have to have at least five acres of land. And then if they get the approval for that, then they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the kennel. We have had two that have done that, and those two have been approved. We've got one right now that was submitted and there's a, for rezoning, similar for agricultural residential, and we know there's one out there in the wings that's probably going to submit in another month or two. The question we had as staff is, would you be willing, or willing to consider at least, removing kennels, not necessarily veterinarian clinics and hospitals, from that list of not being allowed as a major home-based business, and doing something similar to what we did for auto repair, allowing it as a major home-based business, but of course, they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the only reason we ask is it just seems, especially for someone who's living on the property, it just seems a lot to go through to have them actually rezone the property to an agricultural residential, provide that they have at least five acres, and then go through the Board of Zoning Appeal process after that. We thought we'd at least kind of get your appetite as far as would you be willing to eliminate the middleman, so to speak, eliminate the need for rezoning, but still require them to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Let me make sure I understand. You're, are you asking to ease the regulation on kennel?
Just to allow them as major home-based businesses, really, that, when it boils. Now, that's only as, again, if they are living on the property and that's their home-based business. If they want to do it as a standalone, that would still have to go through whatever zoning process for rezoning that would be there. This would only be for those who live on the property and want to run it out of their home.
And is the restriction still going to be a five-acre minimum?
It could be, yeah. I mean, well, not necessarily. This would allow anybody to do it, but it gives the Board of Zoning Appeals at that time the ability to have the public hearing and decide, is that appropriate in a subdivision versus somebody that has 15 to 20 acres?
Okay.
I guess you could, you could do it either way, but that's the way I just explained it would probably be the way we'd handle it. If somebody wanted to run like a kennel out of a subdivision lot, is that going to be looked at as favorably as one that's somebody that lives on 50 acres of land?
So are you asking me if I'm okay if my neighbor has a kennel in the backyard and I hear dogs bark 24/7 versus, versus a guy that works on a couple of cars and may rev the engine once every two or three hours? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, I'm just asking if that's something you're willing to consider. If not, then we can leave it the way it is. I just thought I'd ask.
Okay. Yeah, we just talked about a noise level that a, a noise ordinance we can't enforce. So no, keep your dead gum dogs on five acres way out in the country and don't allow them in a subdivision as a home-based business. That's Mike Kush, and that's my opinion, and it ought to be yours and yours and yours.
All right. That's all I have. Sarfs our ass.
Anything else, Doug?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay. Once again, our next meeting is scheduled for October the 11th. That'll be a 6:00 PM meeting here. Rhonda?
Do we have a new meeting set for the joint meeting with the County Commission and Planning Commission?
No, I'm still, still kind of going back and forth with Michael Skipper to get some dates out there. So, yeah, we're, we're trying, we're working on it.
Anything else? The last I heard, we were getting somewhere around 29 move-in residents a day. That's the last I heard. It's been a little while since that. But I'd like to recognize a new citizen of Rutherford County that didn't move in but just happened to be born here, Fletcher Christensen. Welcome to Rutherford County. Nick? Homegrown. Anybody got anything else? Once again, thank you for your time, your attendance. We are adjourned.